Over here now.
Where'd he go?
Hey, Andy.
Hi, Bill. So we can take these off now?
I think so. Nobody all hears. Township manager just left, so.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting for Monday,
July 13th of the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Vermaelen, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Demilio.
Here.
Mr. Aliva.
Here.
Mr. McCluskey.
Here.
Mr. Siegel?
Mr. Siegel's here, but on Zoom.
Can we hear you, Mr. Siegel?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Dr. Hart?
Here.
I think Mr. Holmes is pulling into the parking lot right now. And Mr. Wexler?
Here. Please stand and join our chief in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For those that may be watching this on TV, the meeting tonight consists of all the commissioners. Eight of us are here in the room socially distanced, hence we'll take off the mask if you'd like, it's up to you. We set the room up so that you would be an acceptable social distance from any other person, and you'd have no nearness for any air bubbles or water there. So if you see us without a mask in the public, that's why we are separated in the room. Mr. Siegel is attending remotely via Zoom, and this is the first meeting that we've had. One of our questions tonight is when we're there. We have been meeting via Zoom during the pandemic since March, and this is our first in-person meeting for us, and the public is invited to watch on cable TV and have submitted comments via email for our public forum. At this time, I'd like to ask the township auditor for his update.
That feels good to be back. I reviewed the expenses and warrants for this meeting. I found no irregularities, and all my questions were answered to my satisfaction.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Next item is a citizens' forum, which is normally 20 minutes of registered speakers and 20 minutes for agenda items. I have at least three items. One is, the first one is from Mr. Anthony Morinelli, which is, as usual, a rather lengthy comment. His title is "Public Comment." It says, "Again, I find that I must put forth a serious concern for the neglected Karakon Creek. Indeed, that it is necessary to bring the environmental needs of the creek area to the attention of the township is indicative of the chronic neglect of our most beautiful natural gift. One would think that this board, of its own direction and interest, might attend to the maintenance of our greatest natural resource. Karakon Creek is the birthplace of Havreford Township. The mills that once lined its banks provide the flour, lumber, clothing, gunpowder, and military uniforms of the 18th and 19th century. Powderhouse, the last vestige of the mills, has been left to slowly decay and crumble. It had received no care, no attention. There is not one marker, one sign, one suggestion of the mill's past and their role in the founding of this township. Karakon Creek is not even listed as a township park. No agency, no commission, no society has shown any evidence of concern for the creek, its environment, or its history. Karakon Creek has, until last year, when some few members of this community began attending to its restoration, been ignored. The creek is overgrown with knotweed, porcelain vine, and other invasives. Along with the creek, the property called Havreford Mountain, home to several unique indigenous species, is also under threat. Again, no agency, no ecological group, no commission or society has shown interest or taken action to curtail the spread of the devastating growths. Beneath the blanket of invasives hide beautiful and delicate native plants and flowers from wild blueberries to a distinct variety of azalea. While some of the area around Mill Road has been cleared by volunteers, in this postal code of Havreford Township, the number of concerned and active volunteers is too few to take on the task of the full creek bed and the mountain. Beyond the pressing need to control the invasives, the creek area is also plagued with lanternfly nymphs, which cluster on almost every branch and stem. And again, what action has been taken? Requests for the simple materials to tape and wire trap the trees have been completely ignored, ignored by a township that claims concern for the environment. Karakon Creek and Havreford Mountain are the most exquisite natural gifts in Havreford Township. The creek offers an unparalleled emotional, intellectual, and physical experience for adults and for children. Many make use of the drive for Sunday walks, and children often play in the creek, but the walkers and the children, in all likelihood, benefit from the drive's natural beauty without awareness of Karakon's history or ecology. Indeed, as they stroll and play, they do notice that the views of the creek and the Powderhouse are obstructed by unbridled invasive growth. The cascading water is not even visible from the drive. As commissioners, it's incumbent for this body to invest time and interest in the restoration and maintenance of Karakon as a historical and environmental heritage. I might also ask the members of this board when last they visited the creek, or when, if ever, they climbed to the top of Havreford Mountain. When they have taken a moment to witness the condition of the Powderhouse? Have the members of this board ever seen the old mill intakes with the remains of the stone dam walls? Have they seen the natural springs that issue from the rocks on the far side of the creek? Are they even familiar with our history? How much would it take for the Township Department to clear the knotweed before it flowers and sets seed? Cutting over four or five years is the only alternative to chemicals. If two or three volunteers can clear a full area with simple hand tools, how much more efficient would township workers be with proper power tools? It seems that the Havreford Reserve does not lack for attention. How is it that Karakon is ignored except for the mowing along the periphery, a mowing which would not have occurred without prompting? How much longer must the creek wait? How long will this township's commissioners and directors delay any action? It has already been too long, but not so long as that some remedy may begin. Celebrate our history and our natural environment. Karakon has waited too long. Tony Morinelli, Harford Hall, Mill Road. He's also enclosed a couple of pictures along the street. We'll pass them. So we'll pass those out among the commissioners. Our second public comment is from Mitchell Cron of 2928 Morris Road. His comment is, "When will all the township boards and commissions resume formal meeting activity? Is there a specific date or a specific set of metrics that are being consulted to evaluate this? If so, please share what those are. If some boards and commissions are currently meeting during the pandemic, which ones and why? Why are all boards and commissions not meeting via Zoom?" Third comment is from Mr. Anthony Lozario, Lozaro, 117 Sycamore Road. "I am a resident of Havertown and was wondering what the township's plan was to combat the lanternfly. They are everywhere, and especially in parks. We have missed the opportunity to use tree bans. We are all concerned." Thank you. I'll answer the last one first. I'll ask Mr. Vermaelen if you have any comments on the lanternfly.
Yes, Mr. Wexler. I think you remember last year, I think it was late summer, early fall, where I gave a presentation and talked to the board about the spotted lanternfly and the fact that we knew that it was encroaching and going to be arriving here in Havreford Township. And we talked about some of the things that residents could do to combat the spotted lanternfly. We talked about the fact that the spotted lanternfly, when it arrived, would be here for a long period of time, and that there was little we could do to eradicate the spotted lanternfly, but there were things that residents could do to slow the spread. And so we talked about the things that you can do, and the resident who gave you that comment talked about the banning of trees, which is certainly an option early in the spring and summer months when the nymphs first hatch, and residents can put bans around trees. But we have to be careful when we're putting bans around trees that we don't inadvertently kill off some of the important insects and other animals like birds that sometimes get trapped on those bans. And so it's recommended that residents, when they put those bans up, can use chicken wire or some other material that will allow the traps to capture the spotted lanternfly nymphs as they climb up the tree, but it won't result in the death of some of those more valuable insects and other animals that we don't want to kill off. We also talked about the removal of the tree of heaven. It's an invasive species of vegetation that would be appropriate for residents to go ahead and remove from their properties. Likewise, the township has taken some action in some of the township facilities, some of our park properties, to begin to take some of those bans and also to analyze some of the tree of heaven that we could remove ourselves. Insecticides, when used appropriately, insecticides can be an effective and safe way to reduce lanternfly populations. We rely on the Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture and the Penn State Extension for a lot of information about the spotted lanternfly and how to deal with the spotted lanternfly. The Penn State Extension is researching which insecticides would be best for controlling the pest, but preliminary results show insecticides with certain ingredients are more effective than others. However, as always, when you're using an insecticide, there are safety, environmental, and sometimes regulatory concerns that we have to worry about, and so we have to weigh the pros and cons, and they're recommending seeking professional assistance. So we've talked about the spotted lanternfly. We provided information to the residents and to the board, and we have done some work in our parks. However, as you know, we're proud of our park and recreation system, but it's a vast system, and we have enough crew to do certain amounts of work with the lawn mowing and the vegetation control and the taking care of our parks and recreation facilities, but we certainly don't have enough to treat every single park and all of the trees throughout the township for the spotted lanternfly at this time.
Thank you.
Bill, could I just add?
Yeah.
One of the other hats, I am a master gardener for the Penn State Extension, and the Penn State has been, this is three years actually, and every year has gotten worse. They are not recommending, one, I think residents need to understand that for their yards, the spotted lanternfly isn't really a threat unless they have grapes or they had a lot of young trees that generally, they're not going to do a lot of damage. The concern, the biggest concern with spotted lanternfly is what they can do long-term to fruit crops in the state, so that's the reason we're trying to control it. The bans that Mr. Vermaelen described are ineffective. Nymphs, as we move later in, now the nymphs, the next stage, they're sort of reddish, and then when we see the adults, those bans won't work if they fly. And there are sort of different types of traps that you can, if you go to Penn State Extension, you can see other traps you can use. It's too big, they're experimenting with some fungicides to see if, but at this point, actually, they're recommending caution that people shouldn't be using a lot of insecticides, that you're going to end up killing pollinators and beneficial insects. And so the bans are great, these other things are great, but one, you know, they're everywhere. You can only do so much to control them.
But isn't part of the problem also, even if you were to use some insecticide or some to deter the spotted lanternfly, the problem is, I mean, if your neighbor's not doing it.
Well, they're all over the place.
They're coming back to your property anyway.
Yeah.
They're coming back into the parks as soon as you spray. They're coming back because not everybody's
Right.
is doing the same thing, so I think it's kind of an impossible task.
Did you, somebody told me today that you can use vinegar and dishwashing. Did you hear that?
There's things, if you go to Penn State Extension, there's things to use. A lot of people use Dawn soap. They're not recommending that, that they can harm. There are insecticidal soaps that they recommend. They're pretty safe to use, you need to keep using them, but a lot of the things that the homemade remedies can do damage to other insects that we want to keep.
Bottom line, check the Penn State advisory.
Yeah, Penn State Extension has a lot of information.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Second comment, Mr. Vermaelen, you may as well just stay there. The township boards and commissions, we have been meeting, the Board of Commissioners has met every month via Zoom to Mr. Cron's comment. Planning and Historical Society and zoning are also meeting. Planning and Historical have met in person because they have a legal requirement to keep projects going. Zoning is meeting in person, socially distancing.
Let me just clarify for you. The planning commission and the historical commission have met under guidelines through Zoom, and they've done so because, as you say, they're legally required to do so under the municipality's planning code, for example, to continue projects. Historical Commission, in this case, meant to provide guidance and recommendations to the building code official and the zoning officer with regard to an historical property that was being renovated for commerce, a restaurant. And the zoning hearing board is the one board that has met in person because they felt, as a board, they felt that it was better to meet in person because they conduct hearings that could later be appealed to court, comma, please.
Correct. And then our other committees have met, they're all volunteer advisory committees, for the most part. Parks has probably been meeting, correct, via Zoom, I guess? So the Parks Board has been, that's our major other advisory board. The senior citizens, I do not think, most of those people have been concerned, and rightfully so, and since they're an advisory board on senior citizen matters, they have not met, but just about everyone is using Zoom. We do follow the state guidelines and the CDC guidelines that's stated here, too. So they are what we're doing, we're trying, we have maintained business as usual throughout the township, I think, in a very professional manner, so. Mr. Morinelli's comments about the Karakon Creek, that's, I'm not the expert, but I'm open to suggestions if there's any help we can give from the township. I don't, I don't know if we consider it a park or not, but it is a natural resource if there's.
I will say, I'm a little surprised at the timing because what we're trying to do with all of our residents is to work with them to try and do the work that they're asking us to do, and in fact, our park maintenance crew spent a full day down at Karakon this past week and cleared a big area of vegetation, the knotweed. And so we're working with Mr. Morinelli the best we can to accomplish what he would like us to do, albeit it's not going to clear the entire Karakon Creek and the whole drive, but we're doing what we can.
Great. And we'll stay, we'll do as much as we can without sacrificing other parks.
Fair.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is Commissioner Committee update. So are there any other police?
Actually, Bill, can I just add to what Dave said? We, Brian Barrett and myself met with someone from Darby Creek Valley Association about a plan to start, if we just removed the knotweed and you don't put something else in, you're going to have erosion, which is going to
Right.
damage the creek. So sort of a long-term plan to start to remove, eradicate the knotweed, but then also to replace it with more native plants. It's, that's a long-term process. We were supposed to get started in the spring, other things happened this spring, but it's still on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any committee updates?
Yes, Mr. President. The Police Committee, which consists of myself, Commissioner Quinn, Commissioner Hart, and Commissioner McCluskey, met with the chief and the deputy chief, obviously, to discuss what happened with Mr. Floyd and what we can do to ensure that that never happens here. So I want to thank the chief and the deputy chief, Joe Hagan, and the police have eight points that the chief will go over that the Havreford Township Police Department is currently going to utilize or is utilizing.
Thank you.
The minutes were submitted to, Dave submitted the email, the minutes to the board.
Yes, they're very good. Thank you for those.
Which contained these eight points. Chief? Yeah?
So Commissioners, you have the update that we have for some of our directives and what we have started to do as a result of the unrest in the country. So as you see and go down the list of things, the banning the chokeholds and strangleholds, we completely ban them except if an officer's life is in danger. And that's pretty much across the board, what's recommended. Obviously, when an officer is in a life-threatening position, he has to do anything to save his life or somebody else's life, but for use in an arrest or to subdue a person is absolutely not permitted. We had this in a little weaker terms in our directives, so we beefed that up to make them not allowed at all. Require de-escalation. We've been doing de-escalation training for quite some time now, but I'll tell you a little story that happened the other day. We had a possible suicide attempt during the day. A very big gentleman in the township. He was outside, his father and his wife had called, and it was really a very difficult situation. He was outside the house, and he was all over the place, up and down, up and down, and you could see him getting more and more tense. We felt it was going to erupt. Five officers were there. In a matter of 45 minutes, they calmed him down, where he agreed to go to the hospital with, on a self-committal, with just conversation between the officers and just working through it. So I wish I could have that video for everybody to see because you can truly appreciate what the police officers did. Obviously, we can't share that because it's not a criminal matter, but it was very, very encouraging and enlightening to see that our officers have to react to a situation like that. I was there, I witnessed the whole thing, and they did an excellent job. Require warning before shooting, and this has been in our directives in a different form, but this is a difficult situation. Use of force is always, always difficult, and it's always something we'll always go back and review, but a warning has to be issued before. Exhaust all other means before shooting, and obviously, no police officer wants to fire a gun and take somebody's life. And I'm sure they would use any other means to bring that person under arrest. So do we intervene? Now, this is the newest one we have, and we've been talking about this for a little while. We didn't write this ourselves, we borrowed it, looks like every other police department would borrow it. We just tried not to reinvent the wheel. We talked to other chiefs in Delaware County who had just initiated this. We took this, changed a little bit to benefit or make it available for our officers. So as you could see and read this, we'll make this available to anyone once this goes, we're finished with the meeting. So the duty to intervene is very, very important. If an officer sees another officer doing something that he feels is dangerous or illegal, he has a duty to intervene, whether it be a chief officer, a lieutenant, or a subordinate officer. They have to intervene there. Ban shooting of moving vehicles, that's been around for quite some time. Require the use of force continuum, we've always had that, it's just we're upgrading the training again, and the comprehensive reporting, which we have been doing when there's an incident that needs to report and bumped up the chain of command. So these are the things that we've been doing. We just beefed it up a little bit, we're reviewing it, and have given additional training. Also, we, Joe Hagan, deputy chief, reached out to Dr. Whitehead, who's the principal of Chatham Park School. He came in here and spoke to every officer in roll call. He's a gentleman, he's black, he's started, Delaware County resident, and just to tell his take on what it's like growing up black in Delaware County in the world. And it was very well-received, a lot of give and take with the officers, and this is the kind of interaction we try and get instead of bringing somebody in to just, here's a program, I'm going to teach it to you, to actually have a conversation with somebody who lived this, who's respecting the community, who's in one of the local schools, knows Havreford Township, knows a lot of our officers. So it's very well-received. We thank Dr. Whitehead for coming and taking care of that for us, so. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other committee?
Yes, we had a meeting of the ad hoc committee to look at possible uses of the Brookline School last month, and we're, their next meeting will be Monday, July 27th at 6:30. We'll maybe try to do the next one on Zoom if people want to participate.
Great. Thank you very much. July 27th via Zoom. Any other committee updates? Our next item is the Township Manager's update. Mr. Vermaelen?
So we've talked a little bit about the economic impact of COVID-19 here in the township and how can residents help, and as the board knows, we've been doing a no-contact food collection and taking that food to local food banks right here in Havreford Township so that we can support our own residents. Just so the board's aware, back in May, Bureau Labor Statistics did report the updated unemployment rate for Havreford Township at 9.5%, and that means that about 2,500 residents were out of work, out of a total labor force of about 27,000. And so that's a big number, and that's why we're trying to do the things we are. Last week, over 110 residents participated. They donated food to our non-perishable food items, to our non-perishable food item collection, and it's held at the Crick. We're going to continue to do that, and it's on Wednesdays from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then again in the afternoons from 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And that's being managed, overseen by two of our parks employees, Kirsten Taylor and Jesse Hart, and we're very grateful to those employees for doing that for us. We also had a no-contact drop-off shredding event this past Saturday, and to our surprise, the staff that were there, it was incredibly successful. There were over 300 cars that came through on Saturday morning, and we were shredding, we did shred in the trucks that were there about 15,000 pounds of paper. And so that paper shredded, and then it's taken for recycling, so we're very happy with that. Next part of my report is to introduce Amy Cuthbertson, our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director, and she's going to talk a little about the reassessment at the county level and the impact here in Havreford Township.
Hi, everybody. It's nice to see you all in person again. So the reassessment that the county is presently in the midst of, I know, is creating, you know, anxiety for some residents, so we wanted to share the information we had and the information we've learned since we did a presentation back in March. So just to review some of the basics, this is a countywide court-ordered process under the direction of the Board of Assessment that will go into effect January of 2021. January of 2021, for their township and county bill, your school bill will not be impacted until July of 2021. So the bill you just got from the school district is based on the current assessments. Preliminary evaluation letters were sent to residents in March, and then everybody should have received their final valuation as of earlier this month. The value assigned should represent what you could sell your property for as of July of 2019, and that is county-wide. So the figure you're looking at on your assessment form should represent market value as of July of 2019. Each taxing authority, county, school, and township will need to reset their current millage before approving any tax increases for 2021. This is a somewhat confusing concept because people see their assessment and think, oh my goodness, the assessment tripled, my taxes are going to triple. That is not the case, and the, this concept of resetting the current rate before any increase for 2021, each taxing district is going to have to go through that process. I'm going to show you an example of how we're going through it. Also, just for residents to know, there is a limit of tax increases following a reassessment. That's a statutory increase, and it's limited to 10% in the year following a reassessment.
Amy, I'm sorry, is that just us, or is it the school district too?
The school district follows different rules regarding the gaming, commerce, and things like that. They have different limitations that are much lower than ours, but that's for county and township limits.
What is that 10%? Is that on the taxing authority or nobody whose assessment went up?
On the rate, 10% increase in the rate. So once we reset it, if the rate goes to four mills, we can only increase that by an additional 10%.
Oh.
So what we have learned since the last time I spoke is we were able to obtain the preliminary values as of March. So the values everybody got in March, we were able to obtain our township-wide total. And as And as I explained the last time and tried to reiterate, we can't reset our rate until we got that township-wide total. So, while this is preliminary, and if I had bells and whistles and horns, I would be flashing that on the word preliminary, this does give a sense of what we can expect, and it is helpful as an estimating tool as residents are looking at what the financial impact of this may or may not be. Also of interest, and this was in the letter to everyone, the appeal period has been extended until September 1st. So, anybody who, after looking at their assessment and comparing it to market values, if they really feel it's out of whack, they have until September 1st to file the appeal paperwork with the county. Okay? Those appeals will be in-person and remote. I believe property owners are going to be given the choice as to what they would prefer to do, since some will not be comfortable going to the courthouse, and they can opt for the remote option.
Amy, can I ask you, it's up, so our approximation is 6.4 billion?
Yes. So, we currently were at 3.2 billion.
So, do we know how we stand relative to other townships?
No. We don't have countywide information. All I was able to obtain was our information. So, that went up.
When will you have that, the other?
It's at the mercy of the county when they distribute it. They had said originally late fall.
Yeah.
So, we might not be getting that for a little while.
So, if our overall assessment, our value, is higher relative to other townships and municipalities in the county.
It would also impact our county tax.
You can expect a, probably a higher percentage increase in your county taxes versus your school.
I would expect Haverford to be one of the higher-valued municipalities in the county.
So, you'd pay, probably if you look at your overall tax bill, you'd pay a higher percentage increase in your county portion of the tax bill versus your school district and the township.
That's what we're expecting based on these preliminary numbers. And while they are preliminary and not final, again, if I had bells and whistles, I'd be saying it 10 times, but I do think this is useful tool. It's a useful tool just for people to try and get a sense of what they're, they might be looking at. So, what else we learned was, using those preliminary values, what we did was, we got a data dump of raw data, and I tried to extrapolate out any commercial properties, things like that. So, 43% of the residential properties in the township were either at or below the 103%. So, those folks are going to either see a stable tax or a little lower. And 57% were above. So, those folks are going to see an increase. Some will be minimal increase and some won't be a minimal increase. That's depending on how far away you are from the 103%. If your property went up 200%, then you're going to see a more sizable increase than somebody that went up 105%. Okay?
So, do you have any sense of what actual percentage increase, kind of range you might expect if you had a doubling or tripling of your assessment? Is there any, can you say, is it a range of 6% to 10%?
I don't want to pinpoint a percentage and then have people rely on that. So, what you'll see in the next slide is when I reset the rate using these preliminary values, you'll see what the new theoretical millage would have been. And people can take their new assessment and multiply it and do the math themselves at home, and they would see what the impact would be. Okay? Once we receive the final values, we will have to redo this entire exercise again. But like I said, I do think this is useful with the preliminary numbers, just to give a sense of what people would be facing. So, I call this an educated estimate of the impact of reset. So, again, this chart shows what we currently build. At our current millage rate of 8.487, we build $26.7 million in tax. The reset column is just showing the exercise into what would the millage rate be with the new assessment, but still billing the same amount of tax. This is a common misconception that we're seeing with residents who are calling. A lot of people think that this is a moneymaker for the township or the county. It's not. As I tried to show in the example, we are only permitted to bill the same amount of revenues that we were under the old assessments. So, the rate will go down. If the assessment went up, the rate will go down. So, using the preliminary numbers, you'll see our tax rate would theoretically go from an 8.487 that it is now to a 4.180. And like I said, what folks can do at home is take their assessment that they have on their letter, multiply it by the 4.180, divide by 1,000 since it's mils, and you'd come up with your taxes, theoretical. And again, this is just to use as a tool so people can see a sense of what the impact would be on their township taxes. Okay?
So, and they can project probably what their school bill is going to be as well?
As a rule of thumb, you could go three times on the school.
That's 70% of the tax bill, right?
You could go three times, I would go three times your township to give an approximation of your school. This would also be before any increase is considered as part of the 2021 budget. Okay? And that is, that definitely has to be a separate vote, like we're always used to doing, but statutorily, it says that any increase above has to be a vote by the Board of Commissioners, which, like I said, you're used to doing. So, that's nothing new for us here in Haverford Township. So, hopefully, that gives, that can give everybody a sense once they go back and do the math. We can do it for you also. If any resident needs help with that, you can call the Finance Department, and we'd be happy to help. But again, this is preliminary. This is just to give a sense, give people a tool as everyone decides whether they need to appeal or not, whether financially or the market value. Word on the appeal process, and I can just say what we learned, there was a meeting of all the tax collectors in the county back in February before COVID started where they explained the process. They did encourage residents to have concrete evidence, whether it be appraisals or comp sales, or, you know, they mentioned some sites online that you can see actual sale history and things like that. They did not feel, while it's within every property owner's right to bring whatever evidence they want to, to plead their case, they did not feel that just saying, my neighbor has the same house as I do, and he told me he's 20,000 less than me. So, they said that was not going to be sufficient, that, especially in Haverford Township, all of our properties are so unique and, you know, in lot size, and what might look the same on the outside is not necessarily the same on the inside. So, neighbor sales are really not, I'm sorry, neighbor values are really not going to be a strong piece of evidence, and they're more looking for comp sales. And if you can find that a house on your block that's pretty much the same as yours sold last year for a value that's much lower than what is on your valuation, that would be a good piece of evidence to bring. Okay? So, you, I lost you.
Amy, I've been asked by a number of residents if they can find out what their neighbor's reassessment was. Is that public knowledge?
That is not public information from the county. We obtained it through a right-to-know request. So, if someone did need that information, we are by law required to share it. So, somebody could call our office and get that information. Okay? I did put out another right-to-know request for final values, just because we do get calls, and we know people are anxious about what the financial impact of this could be. So, we're trying to get as much information as we can for people, but they are not ready to give that out. They said probably next month that the right-to-know request could be answered.
But over time, the county website will be updated with all these test values?
Yes, absolutely.
So, we'll be.
The county does a really.
As it's completed, it will be public.
The county has a really good website right now where they have a lot of public access information. So, I'm sure as that becomes available, they'll put that out there.
As it gets.
But just right now, it's not. And I understand their position. They don't want to put out too much information while this appeal process is still going on because, you know, things are still not set in stone until that appeal process is done.
The issue, though, is that's something that people want to use in their appeal.
Exactly. I know, I know. As much as they discourage using your neighbor across the street, it's just natural that everybody wants to use that comparison.
How do you file an effective appeal without having that information?
You use the other more concrete methods of supporting your case, which would be either appraisals or comp sales, not just comp values by your neighbor. You would actually use sales from July of 2019.
But the more fundamental question, or the bottom-line question is, is your house, what was your house worth as of July 1, 2019? If it was worth more than what it was praised for, or your assessment revealed, then you're probably not going to win an appeal.
Right.
And if it appraised for, maybe your assessment was over what your market value was, then you might have a case for winning that assessment appeal.
Yeah. I think anything from a third party and/or an actual sale or other valuation would just weigh much heavier than coming with just, you know, my neighbor told me his was 20,000 less than mine, so I want mine reduced. Okay? So, again, if you didn't receive your valuation, which we got a call today from a resident who hadn't received it, please call the Board of Assessment. That is the number that's listed on their letter that's listed on the slide.
Can you actually get through now?
I can't promise. I've heard mixed reviews. But I'm sure, I know they're working, they're working on as hard as they can. If you feel your property is overvalued, please follow the procedure and file the appeal. I guess the worst they can say is no. So, if you really feel your case is strong and whatever evidence you have, the worst they can say is no, that it's staying the same. As I mentioned before, please be prepared to bring what they instructed us to be, concrete evidence, comp sales, appraisals, things like that, neighborhood comparisons, we're not going to be looked at strongly. And the county has been very good. They have information out on their website as well as the appeal form, so that's all there at delcopa.gov for everybody to see. So, are any questions?
You don't have any sense of how many appeals have been filed, do you?
I do not, no. I know we got ourselves a very good amount of phone calls as to what to do and things like that. So, I would think, and I would also think that Haverford probably saw a sizable increase overall for countywide. So, I would think there's going to be a lot of appeals. And as we saw, 57% of our residents are above our average, so I think a lot of people saw a sizable increase.
All right. Is the township going to participate as an interested party in the appeals?
We usually let the school district follow or hold the lead since they have a bigger stance in these appeals. That's typical. None of us have been through a reassessment of this side, or at least me and my cohorts in the school district and things have not been through this before, so we may actively participate more than we normally do. I also should say that the township and any taxing authority, the county and the school, also have the right to appeal any property value that we see that is out of whack. We do have some data metrics that we're running right now. We are not going to be looking at every 18,000, every one of the 18,000 properties and, you know, nitpicking, but if we do see a real anomaly, either the township, the school district, or the county also has the right to appeal as the taxing authority.
Do you have to set your, we have to set the township rates after the appeals are over?
Reset the rates or set the rates formally for 2021?
The second.
The second?
Yeah.
Typically, we get our formal assessment in November of each year. That's historically the way it's been, and that's how, what we use to budget. So, I'm assuming we will have that figure before you finally adopt a budget, but we'll probably be estimating, leading up to that, and the preliminary budget will be an estimate. But it typically is. I am hoping we have a better sense of what these final numbers are, at least most of them. Maybe there'll still be some appeals still out there waiting to be decided, but I think we'll have a much better sense of the final numbers on which to budget semi-accurately.
So, the consequence of that would be that if there's a very, depending on the result, a very robust appeal period, the 6.4 billion drop?
Yes. And then the millage would go up because we're still, we still.
And the millage would go back, let's be clear.
Yes. Not, not an increase. It would go back towards.
We're projecting right now 103%. Depending on what happens with appeals, it could be, it could fall below 100%.
Right.
By 100%, we'd double.
Yes. But as soon as we get some additional information that hopefully would arrive mid-August, we can share whatever more additional information we have and go through this exercise again just to, it might be too late at that point for appeals, but at least it'll, you know, people will know what they're to expect.
Well, mid-August is not too late. Those are September 1st?
September 1st, mhm.
And is it a, is it just simply note you're appealing, and it's just at your appeals to bring whatever data you're going to bring?
Yes, yes. You file the paperwork. It used to be a pretty easy form. I'm sure the form hasn't changed much, just property address, you as the owner, why, you as the owner, your standing to appeal, and then you'll be assigned a hearing date. I think on this form, you'll be able to, like I mentioned earlier, select either a remote hearing or an in-person hearing, and they're typically held at the courthouse.
And the assessments have been based on the notion of a truer comparison, a truer evaluation of the market value of your home.
Yes.
If somebody has received an assessment that is a number they've never seen and never dreamed of, their home, that's, that's the best grounds to appeal. I mean, some people are going to appeal because they're going to do the quick math and see if taxes are going up. That's not reasonable. Well, that's not grounds, that's not supposed to be successful grounds for appeal. Is that right?
That's what we've learned, but I think it's everybody's right to try. If you feel you have a good case, whatever your reasons are, the most they can say is no.
But what you suggest is to get the best empirical data from a third-party source that compares your market assessment in July of 2019 from independent sources is your best tool?
I do.
Any other question? Amy, thank you very much. Great explanation and good update.
Are you going to publish this?
I have the March presentation on our website, and I can put this right along with it.
That'd be great. You know what I meant to ask before? Are we, are the police, police publishing the two-page statement?
Yes.
Get up on.
Hold it up. Yeah. Great. Okay. Thank you, Amy. You're done? Item seven is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make and to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 8th, 2020.
Second. Motion made in second by Commissioner Oliva. Any questions, additions, deletions, corrections? Please call the roll.
Mr. Nemilio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes.
Item eight is the approval of warrants. Mr. Holmes?
Mr. President, I approve warrant number seven of 2020 totaling $4,678,741.31 comprising the general sewer fund payroll for June 11th, 2020, in the amount of $1,016,842.04. The general sewer fund payroll for June 25th, 2020, excuse me, in the amount of $717,294.98. General sewer fund payroll for July 9th, 2020, in the amount of $608,790.98. General fund disbursement number seven of 2020, in the amount of $1,627,864.85. Sewer fund disbursement number seven, in the amount of $464,310.82. Community development block grant fund disbursement number seven of 2020, in the amount of $155,014.91. Capital project fund disbursement number seven of 2020, in the amount of $72,268.37. The credit card statement ending June 27th, 2020, in the amount of $16,414.36.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions?
I trust our auditor has, oh, I wasn't here. I apologize. So, our auditor has reviewed these warrants and any questions that these warrants raised, he raised to our township staff, and I believe they were answered to his satisfaction, and I recommend we approve them.
I just have one question. The credit card statement seems unusually high this month. Usually, that's recreation and other things, so I'm assuming there's a good reason.
There was. There was a large computer purchase for probably 20 or 25. There was a large computer purchase for probably 20 or 25 computers purchased for staff. Our IT department got a very good deal, and that's, that's why it kind of is a little high this month.
The 30 new computers, right, okay. Yeah. Great, thank you for that answer.
But we don't carry the balance. We just use it and then, we use the credit cards. We pay them off every month.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item number nine is ordinance P.16 to 2020.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to authorize it to enter an easement agreement proportion of the property located on West Chester Pike Road for the use by Aqua Pennsylvania Incorporated.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions? This is the second reading. We had the explanation last month. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 10 is ordinance P.17, 2020. First reading.
Mr. President, motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance number P.17, 2020, authorizing traffic restrictions on the following highway. Establish special purpose parking in front of 436 Brookline Boulevard and in front of 23 West Wilmont Avenue, and also to rescind highway close to certain vehicles Grove Place from Manoa Road to Upper Darby Township Line.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions?
Yeah, just why, I'm curious, just out of curiosity, why are we rescinding highway closes or vehicles?
Okay. I know, Chief, I could do it if you want. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Grove Place at Manoa Road has a no-truck sign. Could never figure out why because any large truck comes down that hill, and the bridge is so low, they really, they can't go up losing because it's a narrow and winding road there. So it was my estimation that we have to give an access for a truck to turn around, and it never made sense to why it said from Manoa Road to Upper Darby Township Line. It made no sense at all. I saw a clitter with Dr. Hart. We felt it was just a smarter thing to do. Instead of keeping a restriction in place that really has no bearing, we'd never enforce.
Yeah, I was curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 11, resolution 2182-2020. Mr. D'Amelio?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 2182, 2020, authorizing David E. R. Berman, township manager, to enter into and execute an agreement with PA. Dot electronic access for PA crash information.
Second. Motion made in second.
Want to explain that more?
It's a police access.
This is an agreement to allow the police to have access to the state's crash data.
Which will help with?
Analyzing traffic requests for stop signs and other devices.
Why didn't we never have that before?
Have to renew it occasionally.
Very good. Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
And Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 12 is purchased. Mr. Dr. Hart?
Mr. President, motion to approve the purchase, installation, and replacement of the exterior front side doors in the amount of $15,950 to Sandley Access Technologies, Trenton, New Jersey, submitting the lowest responsible bid. This is for the stadium, the front doors.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions on this? This is an important update to the stadium for control of humidity and moisture control, mainly to control humidity that gets in there. And it'll actually have a great effect on our environment, keeping the ice solid and reducing the amount of humidity in there by, with the new door system. Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Item 13.
Mr. President, motion to award the abatement of the former Brookline Elementary School contract to Advanced Environmental Contractors, Philadelphia, PA, in the amount of $149,800, submitting the lowest responsible bid.
Second. Motion made in second. Any questions on this? This is something we have to do, no matter what we do with the building. We have to get rid of the asbestos and any other hazardous materials, have to be abated before we could do any construction or demolishing. So this has to be done no matter what decision is ultimately made.
And it's also true that most likely, if we were to demolish it, the price would now be lower with the asbestos.
When we did the bids earlier in the year, those bids did include the removal of some of these hazardous materials, so that bid potentially would be lower.
Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. South Ardmore Parking Lot Improvements.
Motion to award South Ardmore Parking Lot Improvements contract from Here Concrete Inc., Brumal, PA, in the amount of $116,925, submitting the lowest responsible bid, funding from CDBG.
Second. Motion made in second by Mr. Oliva. Any questions on this? Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Improvements to the federal school.
Motion to formally reject bids for contract number R.30, improvements to the federal school.
Second. Motion made in second. I assume the bids were all?
The bids were significantly lower than budgeted and, the bids were significantly higher than budgeted. The budget was significantly lower than the bids, and we're going to look at rebidding that sometime in the fall.
Great. Please call the roll.
Mr. D'Amelio?
Yes.
Mr. Oliva?
Yes.
Mr. McCluskey?
Yes.
Mr. Siegel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Dr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Wexler?
Yes. Number 14.
Could I ask for clarification? We, just, we need to formally vote to reject all bids on something?
When we're rejecting all of them?
Thanks.
Number 14 is continuation of citizens' forum. We have no additional comments that have come in, Mr. Berman, I assume. Via email. Number 15 is any new business? Is there any new business by any commissioner? Seeing none. Other business? Mr. D'Amelio?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I don't know about all of you. I think we'd love to rewind 2020, start all over again. Hell of a six months so far. My condolences to Public Works and the death of Kenneth Casey Berry, tragic death. And we wish we could do more for his family, but I thank all of your Public Works employees that have been out there, working hard during this pandemic. I also want to thank their volunteer firefighters or EMTs, paramedics that are out there, Jim, every, every day, in helping our residents with the police department. And thanks to the police committee for meeting last month. I also want to thank Mr. Berman and Joe Silla for helping me out with the gas station on West Chester Pike that had some issues there, one of which I think the DEP sent some fines to the gas station. Is that correct? Or a fine?
The DEP sent the enforcement notice. They're bringing them into compliance. Provided they come into compliance, there would be no citation.
Okay. Thank you so much for your help with that, Joe, you and Dave. And how about Bailey Park? Do we have an update on that email I sent to you earlier?
Yes, I, um.
You can, please.
Mr. D'Amelio got an email from a resident saying that there was a lot of trash down at Bailey Park. I had been stopping down at Bailey Park last week because Bailey Park's an attraction for basketball players from all over, wanted to see what the crowds were. I was down there on Saturday morning. It wasn't too bad. But I went down there this afternoon to see what it was like. I ended up cleaning up, and there was about 15 kids down there. And I explained to them that the neighbors were complaining about the trash, and they shouldn't be leaving it. They were pretty amenable to, reasonable about it. And I said, if you don't do that, there's going to be some enforcement here that's going to prevent you from playing. So I talked to two different groups there and told them that they needed to clean up when they were done. But I was there. It was mostly water bottles around the players' benches. I cleaned it all up and told them that we needed them to clean up their own things. And it'll have to be something, we'll have to stop down there regularly and talk to our grass crew when they're down there, that they see that, they have to clean up that too, so.
Brian, I've gotten a lot of calls about that too, about, about the trash. One asked, could we get like a sign or something to, is that, is that, there's been a lot of trash?
There is a couple cans right there.
Yeah.
I don't know how effective a sign is, but sure, we could put up a sign and say, make sure you clean up better yourself.
Great, thank you.
Clarify, parks are open now?
Yes, yes. The basketball courts were open once we went into the green phase.
Okay, and they close at a certain time?
Basketball, the lights go off there at 10 o'clock. Actually, we have, our lighting system works on a egg timer between 7:00 and 10:00. If you're there, you can turn the lights on, so they're not on if nobody's using them. But they'll go off at 10:00, no matter who's there.
Apparently, there's complaints, I don't know, Kevin, Connor, rather, if you're getting complaints, about loud music at night, you know.
By Bailey Park, I've gotten a few of those, yeah. And I live right, right in back of there, so I hear it.
Residents say that there's probably partying going on there and loud music, a lot of bell language, and their kids, you know, hearing all this. So if we could just keep up with this a bit, it'd be great. I understand, look, I mean, people have, you know, they want to get out, and I get it.
I don't know how anybody could hear it over the fireworks.
Well, it's right, right in the back of my house. I hear it well.
That's the worst thing this state ever did, let people have these fireworks that are going off everywhere. But we have ordinances for that.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Could I?
You want to?
Is that it?
I don't think so.
Oh.
Mr. Oliva?
Thank you. Well, I'd like, John, thank you very much for these, the changes in the, in the guidelines of police officers. I see that, that the police department is actually policing itself, and that's, that's very good to see. I'm very proud of our police department in, in making some changes to, you know, find it at times. I also talked earlier, and I'd like, Jim, to speak about it, if you could, about the sign at Lawrence and Eagle Road, the Trump sign, and why we, or why it's there and, because I'm getting a lot of complaints about that sign.
Yeah, I can't answer why it's there. I mean, I have no idea why it's there. But I, you know, from what I understand, and I have not seen the sign, and at first I heard about it was tonight, that it's a Trump sign is what it is. And, you know, whether it can be regulated or not, it's a very difficult question. I mean, our political speech is the most protected area of speech that we have under the First Amendment. There are times when you can regulate, you know, time, place, and size of the signage, but it's very difficult. I'll have to take a look at the sign, take a look at the case law, but I can tell you right now that, that, and I said this earlier tonight, and it's kind of a bad pun, but the Constitution generally trumps the zoning ordinance, so, but I'll, I'll take a look at it.
So Jim, just to be clear, so you're, so what you're saying is, if I wanted to put a long sign on my property out of the public right of way, for political purposes, whatever they might be, it could basically be any size, and I could light it?
I don't know that, I can't give you a blanket yes on that. I can give you a general answer that, that they're very difficult to regulate. You can, you definitely can't ban them, and regulating them is very difficult.
But we couldn't, so we're undergoing the, looking at all our ordinances, and in that exercise, could we not restrict size, the size of a sign on a residential property?
Right.
You know, whatever the number might be, some dimension can't be lit.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, really, the problem with these signs is, it's not really fair to the neighbors who don't, you know, like, don't like this particular sign.
Right.
You know, object to it, or whatever the message might be. It's not so much the message, it's the fact that the sign is so large that it really is not, it's not good for the neighborhood.
Yes, and I, I hear you, and I, and I agree to most signs. I mean, there are different categories of signs and different types of signs. What I'm saying, though, is when you, when you get into the political arena, that, that really becomes a protected area. So, you know, if it was a sign that said, you know, happy birthday or something, you know, and then we might have a better chance at regulating it. We may have a chance at doing something with this sign. I'm just trying to give you a heads up that it's really difficult with this type of sign to regulate it, and, you know. the signs and, and then, you know, it's almost a hope that people will, you know.
A challenge.
You know, appreciate their neighbors, you know, and not put a big giant sign up that's bothering the neighbors. But if the person chooses to fight against it and, you know, brings you down to the federal court with a First Amendment argument, it's a difficult case. I'm not saying you can't win it, but I'm saying it's a difficult case.
Well, I think we should start there, as we look at our ordinances, we ought to start with that restriction and hope that.
I'll take a look at it.
Be considerate of their neighbors.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Siegel.
Mr. Siegel, say something.
Go ahead, Mr. Siegel.
We did look at that, I can tell you historically, a few years ago, plus a few years more when we actually revised the sign ordinance, a few years ago, that property raised a lot of questions. I get more complaints about it than anything else in the ward when there were signs that weren't for a candidate but were for another political issue that many found far more offensive than a sign for a candidate. And I know, and I can find the research, that we felt that, in consultation with Mr. Byrne's office, that we were very limited despite, you know, a display that many of us considered obnoxious, but the First Amendment does limit our ability. And the last thing we want to do is go into federal court, lose and be hit with attorney's fees over something. But it's, we concluded back then that we really, our hands were basically tied as long as it did not impact sight lines, public safety, et cetera. And in fact, at one point, the signs were closer to the street and were moved back after the, it's a business, was cited for it. And historically, when we've tried to cite him, he takes the, anything that may be potentially a violation down after 29 days and starts over again a day or two later.
And Dan, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Didn't we, didn't we also, we used to regulate how long a political sign can be up and we realized that we could not do that? And in fact, I remember this, I'm sorry?
He said correct.
Right, so, I mean, we, we more or less said that the sign can stay up, not that sign, but a political sign can stay up all, all the time.
Yeah.
Now, let me finish. So I, I don't like the size of the sign, I mean, everyone has a right to put a candidate's sign on their lawn. I would agree that we should look into whether or not we can limit the size of the sign. Is, or Dan, are you saying that that would not be possible?
I think it depends. I mean, I can tell you, last year, there were a lot of complaints, not just in Haverford, but in the county, when we had obviously a very contested countywide elections. And whether it was, there were signs Republican and Democrat that were far larger within the township and elsewhere than ordinances and no one sort of wanted to try to address it because of the concern you might, you may well lose. The case law is not good for regulating political signs unless they're public safety issues, you know.
Yeah, I, my office, I mean, we're really on top of signs, I mean, you know, we represent a lot of different towns with respect to not only this type of signs, but, you know, commercial signs and that, so we really have a pretty good feel for the cases on signage and that's why I started out telling you that I think it's a very difficult case now. You know, and I know that we did revamp the ordinance with what we thought was the law at the time and I think it's still the law, but what I, I'm happy to do is take a look to see if there's been any new cases, but I don't know of any that would really help us much more.
But, but as far as safety, Dan, you brought up, I mean, the sign is being vandalized and it's, I don't know if that's a safety issue or not, but it could create some issue.
Yeah.
Are we looking at it too?
It's creating a lot of humor.
I'm sorry?
It's created great laughs.
I didn't hear it.
Oh, it is, it is creating a lot of good laughs.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'll take a look at the sign, I'll take a look, update the cases, but I just, I don't want to get anybody's hopes up.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Berman.
No one is allowed to deface any opponent politically.
Yeah, that's a different issue though, I mean, then.
That's another one.
They can have the sign.
Sorry?
Nothing, go ahead.
Yeah.
Bill asked me whether I had more and I said, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. But, you know, are you stealing some? People used to do that.
Right, right.
Which is illegal, correct?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's illegal, yeah.
Retard. Yes.
I just want to make sure.
Haverford Township's still legal.
Because, no, in all honesty, some people look at that as, it's not, no big deal, it's just part of the political game, but it's, it's a crime.
I guess it depends on whose signs you're stealing.
Okay, but that's civil disobedience.
Mr. Aliva, go ahead.
All right.
So I was, I received a phone call earlier, earlier in the week about a lawn sign, again, that was marked as, as one, as the person put it, it was scary to think that in this township, somebody puts out a lawn sign and his house is marked. So I would urge everyone to, to put out whatever lawn sign you want to on your lawn, but within regulation.
Aren't any.
As, we don't know what that is, but, but don't be afraid to put out what you feel, that your First Amendment right is, is paramount to us and to, and I think that anybody who does anything like that should be prosecuted. It's, it's not, anybody should be able to, to put out what they want within reason. So I, I was, I was taken back by the phone call and I told the gentleman to call the police and, and, and he did and I drove by his house today on my way here just to make sure and his lawn sign is still up, so I am, I'm glad to see that, that it is and that everybody is able to put up whatever they want. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner McCluskey.
Yeah, I just, every, I think the township is doing the best it can to continue with business as close to normal as possible and I commend everybody in the township for doing that. And I want the residents to know that we're, we're by all means trying to continue with, you know, there's zoning applications and permit applications and everything that the township normally provides, you know, Public Works picking up your trash twice a week. We're trying to do everything as safely as possible. But every call, every email any of us get, the, the underlying and the ultimate, you know, the ultimate backbone to all of it is that we all have to make sure that we stay in the green phase. So I just encourage every resident to continue practicing social distancing, to wear your masks, to wear your mask, to wear your mask. So that's, that's, that's what we have, we need to, I think we're seeing in the news and in every other part of the country that if you open up too quickly, it's not going to go away magically. So please help us keep Haverford Township in the green zone because that's the only way kids go back to school, that's the only way people go back to work, that's the only way, you know, there's football there, the only way anything happens in the fall. So we're all in this together, so please wear your mask. Thank you.
Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, I just want to echo what Commissioner McCluskey just said. You know, we've, we've lost a number of residents in the township, many of whom I knew. And as you can see, I'm still erring on the side of conservatism with the situation. Please protect yourselves, protect each other, that's the best way we can come out of this, healthy and our families and friends healthy. And I hope to see all of you next month in person.
Thank you. Commissioner Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight Fifth Ward resident and Brynmar, the college professor, and two of his students are putting forth a, what I think to be a pretty exciting public-private partnership to try to fund the purchase of solar panels for the crack in the scadium. Some commissioners may already be familiar with this because I think they've presented to the EAC. But the tax benefits would not benefit obviously the township, it would benefit a private partnership. I understand those tax benefits have, I guess, go away in 2022 if I, if I understand it correctly. So there's some, still some financial incentive in the private sector to fund solar panels. So their thinking is to try to put together a private, a public partnership to have the partnership purchase of solar panels at their expense and then lease the crack in the scadium rooftops for solar panels and then come back, come back to the township with hopefully a very competitive power rate or, you know, less than, less than we might be able to buy it competitively. And then whatever excess power is produced would be sold at the grid. So it could be, it could be a pretty exciting partnership. I don't see it as overly attractive for investors, but I think, I think there are investors out there that are interested in, in helping their community and, and seeing, you know, a better environment, supporting a better environment. So I think they're willing to take, take some risk and probably see less of a return. So I think it's a pretty, as I said, exciting project that I think as a township, we should, we should pursue. And unless there's an objection from anybody on the board, I would like to ask our solicitor just to, just look at it quickly to see if there's anything, you know, from a legal perspective that might be a roadblock to the formation of such a public-private partnership.
Andy.
Yes.
Correct, we have hydro power there, right?
There's geothermal.
Geothermal, rather, sorry.
Which is the heating and cooling.
Heating and cooling, not electrical.
Not electric.
Okay. Then I, yeah, good.
Jim, is that, listen.
Yes, it's, I'm happy to do it. There, you know, while, you know, public-private partnerships are encouraged and especially in the area of energy and things, there are some regulations that we have to make sure that we don't go afoul of with respect to the project that we're doing. So I would need to take a look at what the proposal was and compare it with, you know, the different statutes to see whether we can do it.
Can we, I mean, can we just authorize you to do it? I'm for it, if we need to vote on it.
I think the township manager can authorize it.
Yeah, the township manager could authorize me, but I just, yeah.
Yeah, and then also, they're looking for, I talked to Dr. Denae last week about this and he would like to, you know, we're pursuing people that can provide some expertise to this project, whether it be legal, accounting, you know, these purchase agreements, these kind of things that can actually help kind of formulate the, you know, how this is going to work. I mean, conceptually, it makes a lot of sense, but then you have to get down into the details and how is this going to really work and how's the township going to benefit, how your taxpayer is going to benefit, how the investors, you know, it's got to be, it's got to be a win-win situation for all parties, otherwise it's not going to work, obviously, so. So there's a lot of details to work out, so I'd urge anybody that has any knowledge or wants to participate in this, in this project, this, this, really at the feasibility stage to, you know, let me know or let Dave Berman know or let the president know or one of your commissioners know that you have the expertise to, you might be able to help in this, in this feasibility phase, so.
Andy, and just today, the EAC, they're going to do a presentation to the EAC in the next couple of weeks and then they hope to fine tune that to do a presentation to the board maybe in August or something.
Yeah, thank, I forgot to raise that, thank you, Dr. He said that to me as well, so hopefully the board might be receptive to hearing from that, that, from Victor Denae and his students sometime in August or September, whenever they feel they're ready. By Zoom, I assume, but thank you, Dr. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
Mr. President, thank you. First, I want to thank, I want to thank our chief and our deputy chief for publishing the police department's latest, latest decisions and determinations as to how to address a lot of people's concerns about the police. And as John said, but it may not have been very obvious to everybody hearing, some of these things are new, some of these things are beefed up versions of stuff they've already done, but some of these things have already been the policy of Haverford's PD. So I appreciate the effort that you've gone to and I appreciate that you're going to publish this. I think this is going to give some people a great deal of comfort who are concerned, just generally, specifically here, about what they perceive sometimes as the different police departments reluctant maybe to make, to make moves in this direction. I know in the fall, John, there's going to be pressure on the board from, from within the board as well as from people now with new perspectives about policing, there's probably going to be a great deal of questions about the budget, I would suggest. Not that you prepare for changes as much as you just prepare for questions. Explain to people how much of our budget is really about our cost of personnel, how little of our budget is, is what people would call, you know, military-style hard work. But be prepared for those questions from us on the board as well as, I think, people in the public. And speaking of the public, it, I want to thank Public Works who've tried throughout this pandemic to still maintain excellent staffing and respond to all the things that have happened, you know, in the township. We've had, in addition to the pandemic, we've certainly had, you know, lousy weather and other events and responsible Public Works Department has really been terrific. And in the Sixth Ward in particular, but it seems all throughout the township, there's a great deal of construction going on right now. And I just would tell everybody in the township, and in particular, I want to ask everybody in the Sixth Ward who's dealing with the unexpected closure of Wynwood Road and some of the other projects that are going on, to please, please be careful, especially right now while so many people are home. Our neighborhoods are much more crowded during the day than they typically would be when people are at work and kids were at camps or something like that. So please be very careful. As you go through these detours and you start cutting through the neighborhoods you think you know, you don't know every kid there, you don't know every family there, so please, please drive carefully and drive slowly through that. I want to thank the police department and the township and the county for the excellent information and constant stream of information that's being provided, our social media pages and on the website pages. It's been very helpful for our constituents in Haverford Township to have immediate access to good information. I encourage everybody to go to the best sources of the information for where we are in the latest phases in this pandemic. And that would be the county, that would be our township, and it would also be our police department. And then finally, I just want to say, this is the time of the year where we would often have proclamations for students who did something very special, our high school students, some of our college graduates, even some of our grade school students. And I look forward to when we all are able to, you know, reconvene here and we can do those, do those proclamations for those students in the fall or wherever it is that we finally have these restrictions lifted. There are constituents of mine as well, constituents of all of us on this board who do deserve some, some heralding their accomplishments in the last year, especially under these circumstances. And I look forward to us being able to do that in person for folks, I hope, in the fall, fingers crossed. So that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Commissioner Quinn.
Thanks, Bill. I would like to thank the chief, I get call, the calls, the calls every week, to thank you and your force or, or for everything you do to keep this town safe. And I've been getting lots of calls because there's more cars on the road and everybody cuts through now, so just to, just to tell everybody, when you go down streets, don't speed like you would speed on the other roads, don't speed, period, period. But, and Brian, Brian, thank, thank you for your, for to address the Bailey, Bailey, or Bailey Park thing and it's just great to be back here. Let's get this year done. And I got playing that, or that ever since I joined this board, things have, yeah, so.
Both of them, Dan Hill says Connor joined.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. Dr. Hart.
Yeah, just everyone, stay healthy, keep your neighbors healthy, practice the three W's, wash your hands, watch your distance, wash your, and wear masks, wear masks, wear masks, stay well.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank all the departments, we've done, I think the township has done a great job during this, this pandemic. Before we adjourn, I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask everybody here in the room to please stand. At this time, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for our employee and fellow township employee, Ken Berry, KC, he was officially known down in our Public Works Department, one of our best mechanics that passed away this past month in a tragic accident at the yard. Please join me. Thank you very much. We stand adjourned.